Where is she?
She's a little girl, she.
Okay. I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board meeting, February 25th, 2021, at 6:00 PM, and ask Clerk Simsky for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
The clerk's here, Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry is absent today, Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo is absent today, Trustee Little.
She is.
She is here.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Trustee Nero's online.
Okay, he's present also. Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Assistant Manager Harker.
Here.
CD Director Sylvester is here too, so here comes trustee.
Okay, we have a quorum, and would everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. First item, and again, this is a virtual meeting, kind of a hybrid, and we'll continue to do that, the public is welcome to come in, or they can submit public comment for open forum, and I'm going to turn to Manager May and ask him if he has any open forum requests.
Mayor, thank you, and you, since we've been doing this almost a year now, you'd think I'd be ready. So there are nobody in the room for open forum, and there are no online comments submitted.
All right, then I will close open forum, and we'll move on to reports. First report is mine. And again, I talked about the public is more than welcome to either attend or submit any comments online. The first item, I'd like the Fire Chief Riley to give an update on COVID-19 from Westmont's standpoint.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. Currently in DuPage County, we're at 71,588 cases, along with 1,190 deaths. In Westmont, we're at 1,811 cases, and the good news is that we're only at 37 cases in the last 14 days. DuPage County is continuing to vaccinate those that are in the 1B category. I myself have been on numerous conference calls this week alone with FEMA and Illinois Department of Public Health with the DuPage County Health Department, as they are looking for sites in DuPage County that they can start vaccinations on numerous people at one time, and I'm happy to report that Westmont is being looked at as one of those sites. As you all know, the negativity to this is that DuPage County cannot get enough vaccinations to do 6,000 in a day that they want to, as they're only getting about 2,500 per week. Lastly, Mayor, as I talked about at the last meeting, I've been receiving numerous phone calls, and I'm just going to say that the CDC is now, again, recommending of wearing two masks for better fit and extra protection. One way to do this is wearing a medical procedure mask underneath a cloth mask. This combination provides much better protection compared to a cloth mask by itself, or a medical procedure mask by itself. Again, if it's done correctly, the combination of these two masks tighten the gaps around the mask edges, and they can let the virus particles in, so we want to urge those residents that are having concerns to possibly wear two masks. I know it is very difficult to do, however, it is definitely better protection, again, with washing your hands, social distancing. As we open Restaurant Week tonight in Westmont, I certainly would, again, ask everyone in the public to social distance and wear masks at all times when you're not eating or drinking. So unless you have any question, Mayor, I'm still working with FEMA and Illinois Department of Public Health to hopefully bring a site here to Westmont. Unfortunately, it's not DuPage County's decision, it's strictly FEMA and the Illinois Department of Public Health.
Thank you, Chief. Manager May, do you have anything to add?
I did, thank you. The Chief described the, well, started, you know, briefly described the efforts by DuPage County Health Department, who is actually the entity or the authority working on the administering of the vaccine in DuPage County. They get their supply from the Illinois Department of Public Health, who gets it from the federal government, and, you know, that's the chain working backwards. In DuPage County, the allotments are distributed, but there is a, there is a whole different mechanism for congregate living facilities, and they get their allotments in a different way. Just like they were counted differently for, by different mechanism for the amount of positive tests, the vaccination is the same thing, they're kind of handled in their own separate way. Recently, and by recently, I mean in the last two weeks maybe, school districts have been arranging to get, in an effort to get kids back to school, they've been working through a supplier, working directly with the Illinois Department of Public Health, I don't want to say circumventing, but it bypasses the DuPage County Health Department process, and they're getting their own allotment. So a couple of weeks ago, District 86 had a big Seoul single event, and this weekend, District 99 has one going on too, that is run in a similar. When I say excess, they have more doses available to them than what was needed directly for district purposes. From there, they invited the municipal partners, the municipal partners that are, that feed District 99, which is all of Downers Grove, Woodridge, there's a very small portion, but still a portion of Westmont that feeds 99, Darien, and there might be some other, you know, in Lyle, I don't know. But the municipal partnering with the municipal partners for our own staff, but staff that is already 1B eligible staff, so they're allowed to, you know, register for that event. I got to back up a little bit now, because what's the alternative? Everybody who's 1B eligible should already be registering on the DuPage County Health Department website, and continue to do so, and make sure that you're registered there, and then that's when you get your time slot. So this was a, to use the single event and gain access to that for, you know, the public safety is pretty well taken care of at this point, they were, majority of them are 1A category, we've been doing 1B here, even though Chicago and Cook County are at different places than we are. And, you know, I'm talking in a big circle here, but this event was to municipalities, and then when they got, and all of this is started two nights ago, you know, when I was contacted, this was available. So luckily, we already had a list that we had with our own staff that, should these things occur, would you be interested? So we had a quick, you know, contact list for that. That got expanded out to park districts and other entities, and just late last night, I learned that there are still going to be an excess, and what I do know is that there's only 450 for the entire event. But there's a, still a small excess left, and they decided last night they're opening it up to the public, also, you know, district residents, you know, to the public. And so for Downers Grove and Woodridge, that's a big population and a big access, and their allotment percentage wise is going to be large too, but Darien, Westmont, we're, you know, a very minuscule amount maybe would be available, I'm not even really going to know till tomorrow if there is any, let alone what that number might be. So we had a registration portal open now, it is not a, it's not a registration, it's a pre-registration, kind of like expressing interest if you want to be on that. Technically, the pre-registration is closed, it closed earlier this morning, but should there be interest in this event, for those that are already 1B eligible, they should still register or preregister through our website, because the, I'm told, it's, again, it's a school event, but, you know, we might have an allotment that's dedicated to the Westmont, you know, community. So we are collecting the names in the event that, you know, more become available, or other people can't make the registration, and this event would occur on Sunday, so this is all got to wrap up tomorrow, but I just encourage anybody who's interested in that, it's not a Village of Westmont event, it's not a DuPage County Health Department event, it's just access to, access to that District 99 event, potentially, and why do I even bring that up? It's because there's been a lot of phone calls generated this morning about, you know, wanting attention, or how do I get in on that? So.
Mayor, if I could ask.
Yes, please register.
Manager May has, you know, more information than we do about this, does anybody, you know, in the meetings that you get your information from, does anybody talk about kind of the failure to get it to the seniors that don't have the electronic skills to do it online? I mean, they've had, I mean, that's the complaining that I hear, so they've had to have heard this, that, you know, what is their option? You know, keep calling Walgreens, or, you know, call the.
I mean.
Has anybody tried to address that?
We heard that, actually, it's a very common, it's a very common reoccurring theme, and to, to answer the first part of the question, is we have weekly meetings with DuPage County Health Department, and we have this entire time, you know, dating back to last March or April, you know, these weekly meetings were set up. I'm not speaking for anybody else, but the Health Department's a little dumbfounded by, you know, that process too, because they have access to it by virtue of other means, and it, you know, like I said, it bypasses the county Health Department, so, you know, so there is no mechanism for addressing that, because they have to know to contact, or go through their doctor, or, you know, get access to these locations, or you register online, but that, like you said, it requires a computer, so there is no outgoing phone outreach or anything like that, you have to rely on your family and, you know, friends to keep you apprised of the system, and a lot of the phone calls we get are about parents in town, not necessarily the individual themselves, so. It's all difficult and hard, and everybody's frustrated with it.
But Manager May, the realizing that there gave us a amount of, a portion of vaccines that are related to how many kids are in 99, it could be anywhere 2025, and we don't know yet, that's why we're encouraging people to register on our village website, and again, Woodridge and Downers have significantly more students, so they're going to get more available vaccination shots.
Yeah, and my understanding is, is the interest in these other bigger communities are in the thousands, and like I said, there's only 450 for the entire event, so there's, there's a lot of, not outreach, there's a lot of incoming, you know, interest in this, and there's not a lot available, but yes, it is going on.
Yeah, and it just became available, so we set it up on our website, and if, for sure, we have, and we're going to look at 1B.
You have to be 1B eligible already.
To get the shot, yes.
Now, we're, I'm glad you brought that up, because 1B eligibility, there are a lot of medical-based reasons to do that, and we don't get to ask you about your medical situation, so we are, and I know the other communities are, they're only using the age based, because we can ID that and we can confirm, so it's really 65 and older are eligible for registration for, I'm only talking about this event Sunday.
All right, thank you. Couple other items, 100th anniversary best pet contest, you have three more days to send us a picture of your pet, and tell us why your pet should be the 100th anniversary mascot. You can sign up online. We have the trivia contest results. Congratulations to the Fantastic Four team, consisting of Lauren Baldwin, Karen Leela, Betty Ann Gillis, and Kristen Kelly, for having the best overall score. We will be presenting awards at a future meeting. All 100 trivia questions and challenges have been posted on the village website, so if you're curious to know the answers, you can check that out at westmont-il.gov. And I have a certificate of appreciation, that's from the United States Census 2020. A thank you to the Village of Westmont for being a valuable member in coordinating the census, and I'd like to present this to Trustee Barker, who led the effort for the Village of Westmont, so, Trustee Barker.
I'd like to present to them.
There you go.
And I know your committee did a tremendous job. Thank you, Ken.
Can you just flip the camera around, take a selfie?
Do you want to hold this for us?
No.
At least, Trustee Barker, go ahead and elaborate on that connection.
Yeah, I would just, you know, it was, you know, I was able to, as Chairman of Westmont first, I was able to, you know, help with that, and Jenny took the lead on that, of course Jenny Babeyer took the lead for us on that. She did a great job in, you know, asking everybody on the committee to do something to move this along for us, and then she followed up with the census people to make sure our questions were answered, and it was relevant facts. You know, the people on the committee did do the work that they were asked, but without her guidance, the committee wouldn't have gotten very far, and I'm, I keep saying that I think it was the best Westmont response we've had to date, and we're anxious for the results, because if we do get the census count that we have hoped, that'll help us financially, and that's what we're looking for, so on behalf of the committee and our staff liaison for this, thank you.
Good, well, thank you. And that's all I have, I'll turn to Clerk Simsky.
Okay, I'll update everybody on the local elections. Local voting will take place on April 6th for village positions. Park District Township and Library Positions vote by mail will be available February 26th, but you will have to call the county to get your ballot. Last day for early voting is April 6th, you can register to vote at the clerk's office. Early voting locations can be found on the county website. And the Westmont Citizen of the Year nominations, the Westmont Citizen of the Year nomination forms are now available at westmontchamber.com, or at the Westmont Chamber Office and Metro Station. The deadline to submit nominations is March 5th, 2021. And I just want to remind everybody, it is Restaurant Week, so get out and support our restaurants during that, and to wish the mayor a very happy birthday, I know his birthday is approaching, along with his lovely wife, Toni, so.
And today is Trustee Guzzo's birthday.
And yes, today is Trustee Guzzo.
I've got the, fortunate to be the same age as my wife for two days, so every year. All right, thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few items tonight. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is March 25th at 4:30, right here in Village Hall, and via Zoom. Just a little quick update, we have used 1,533 tons of salt to date, I asked Mike if that was, you know, how does that rate to typical year, and it's much more, typically use about 1,000 to 1,200 tons, so I think we can all imagine what the amount of snow we had in the last, you know, few weeks, we've been using quite a bit of, quite a bit of salt, but thanks again to all those, the entire department, the street department specifically, for all the cleanup with the melt heat in downtown, and where they're, you know, really hiding the snow, I guess is a good way to put it, but what would we do without them over the past week? So I appreciate all the efforts from everybody, and hopefully, we turn the corner and we can keep melting instead of getting more snow, but that is all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I'll turn to Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. The next Administration Finance Committee meeting will be held March 11th at 4:30 here in Village Hall, and then the last item I have is the Village E newsletter, please sign up now for the Village E newsletter, we have almost 3,000 people signed up so far, and it's easy to do, you can sign up at the village website, westmont-il.gov. Thank you so much, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, and I'll give Trustee Johanna Guzzo's report on the Public Safety Committee, April, next meeting will be April 22nd at 4:30, right here at Village Hall. The Police Department, the pet food drive for People's Resource Center was a huge success, three pallets of pet food was dropped off at PRC. The Fire Department will be hosting a virtual online Citizens Fire Academy starting April 1st, this will be a five-week class, sign up is available now. And also, the Fire Department, the TV show, Chicago Fire, was once again here in Westmont filming, they were filming at the Fire Police Station, again, this is a great to continue to see the Chicago Fire coming to Westmont, but it's called Springfield, it's, they're in Springfield, but they're in Westmont. Once the Fire Chief hears the date and the episode air, we'll let you know. So that's all she has, and Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. The Environmental Improvement Committee will meet Monday night here at 6:00 PM, that will be in person or electronic option is available, and then you can go to the village website and register for the curbside compost, well, I'm going to say composting, it's not curbside, because some people don't have access to the curb, but the composting program is available option for you, if you want to do a little bit more for the environment, you can sign up to participate in that, it is optional, and that is available on the village website, that is all, thank you.
Thank you, and Trustee Barry III is not here tonight, and he would give a quick update on the Community Development Committee meeting that was held prior to this meeting, they discussed staff ideas for improvement to the village's land use regulations, zoning code, from the planner for the village. The Building Commissioner provided an update on the fire damaged building at 515 North Cass Avenue, and discussed the idea of a builder recognition program, and Director Sylvester gave us an update of the fourth quarter, so we appreciate that. Trustee Brady.
Okay, under Westmont Restaurant Week, the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau is hosting the fifth annual Westmont Restaurant Week, starting today, February 25th, and it's running through Sunday, March 7th. The details and menus from the participating restaurants are available at westmontchamber.com. I will let, have each of you enjoy this very selection of menus in our restaurants, and welcome back diners. Under new business, I want to give a quick congratulations to Aleah Rose Salon, she relocated from another western suburb, she's been in business several years, and she moved into 22 North Cass, recently remodeled building, and we're looking forward to a ribbon cutting ceremony with the Chamber of Commerce with Aleah, in the near future, and her team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on, items removed from the consent agenda, does anybody have any items? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
On the consent agenda this evening, first, we have village board minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held February 11, 2021, this is followed by finance ordinance number 19, which is in the aggregate amount of 913,900, I'm sorry, it is 913,692.80. We have two purchase orders, first one is Viddo Tree Experts, $22,432, represents a tree pruning throughout the village, mass tree pruning of village Parkway trees, and second purchase order, Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, $20,875, that represents our second payment for Chamber external funding for tourism services. The total of the purchase orders is $43,307, brings the total of purchase orders together with finance ordinance number 19, to $956,999.80. That's the entire consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as read? Motion to approve? Trustee Brady.
Second, Little.
Trustee Little, second, on to question. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
He's on mute, but his lips said yes. Yeah, yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business, A, Engineering Services Agreement with Premier for 2021 MFT resurfacing project, board to consider ordinance authorizing engineering agreement with Primerah, Premierah Engineering for Phase Two and Phase Three Design, and Construction Engineering for the 2021 MFT resurfacing project. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor, staff is requesting approval of $107,540 for 2021 MFT resurfacing project, project will include approximately 68,000 square yards of resurfacing, staff does recommend approval of this.
Did everybody hear that? Mike, can you speak into the microphone a little bit?
Get closer to the computer.
Also, to it.
Okay, I'll try to talk louder, so we're requesting the sum, approval of the sum of $107,540 for Phase Three Design and Construction Engineering for 2021 MFT resurfacing project, project will include approximately 68,000 square yards of resurfacing, staff recommends approval of this process.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Nero.
Motion made in second, on to question.
I can just describe that MFT, the MFT uses motor fuel tax funds, but this is the mass resurfacing project, so there's multiple locations that add up to this square yardage, but it's really linear feet of street.
Good.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So we've always had that issue with that little bit of roadway right over the tracks?
Yes.
Is that part of that repair? I mean, I looked at it today, and it looked a little bit like a cobblestone area again.
The Cass Avenue north of the tracks?
I know we're talking that will be in, with the intersection improvements in the Burlington Avenue, so it is not part of the MFT project.
Yeah, but.
Part of that, so there's, I'm going to agree with the need, but the motor fuel taxes are simple resurfacing, like grind off and mill, when you start getting into signalized intersections and detectors, and those projects need larger set of plans and a higher involvement in the design before you go into it.
Yeah, I know, so we all, we all agree that there's a need, but it's been, you know, there was always something going to be done there.
Yeah.
And we're not even, are we sure that it's going to be done, and is that two years away? You know what, I don't think what we want, and I know if Trustee Barry was here, he'd say the same thing, to have that all busted up for another year or two. So that's, is there some patching that's going to be done there? It doesn't have to be part of this, but I'm just, is there a plan for that?
I can say is this is just the engineering services agreement, so I can just assure you, we'll look at it.
Thank you.
See if we can include it.
Yeah, because I think we could do some patching there to make it a little bit smoother.
Well, exactly, so it's not a hazard, you know.
So it's not a hazard, you know?
All right, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, B, Village of Westmont in lieu of a surety bond for IDOT. Board to consider resolution to the Illinois Department of Transportation for years 2021 and 2022 that the Village of Westmont hereby pledges to good faith and guarantees that all work shall be performed in accordance with conditions of all permits granted by the department. Director Ramsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a resolution that we do every couple of years with IDOT that allows us to have a security bond for municipal work that we do on Ogden Avenue. Allows us to do work in emergency situations without having to have a bond. This is just something we, agreement we have every year with IDOT, and it's basically a surprise to have.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second. Any comments? Seeing on roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, C, 2021 Zoning Map. Board to consider ordinance to approve the updated zoning map dated 12/31/2020 as the official 2021 map for the Village of Westmont. Director Sylvester, very colorful.
Yes, so very briefly, this is a, an annual event. I'm sure you all recall it from previous years. It is both good practice, and it is also a requirement of the state of Illinois that a municipality adopt a map every year that basically reflects any zoning changes from the previous year. So I've explained this to my staff, and I just want to make sure everyone here is clear. The action you're taking now is not rezoning anything. It's simply adopting a map that reflects any rezonings that you approved during 2020. And for that particular year, for 2020, there was only one zoning map amendment, and it was the area along East Quincy on the north side where we created a new zoning district to try to create some rules that were appropriate for that area that has historically been industrial. And so this map officially reflects that change that you approved about a year ago now.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Comments? And it's also boundary, it shows our boundaries.
If there are boundary changes made during 2020, they would be reflected on this map, but correct me if I'm-
The map reflects boundaries. This is kind of a composite map. We also show addresses. We didn't always do that in the previous year, so it's, it's just a handy all-in-one map, but most importantly reflects the zoning characteristics of every person.
Where our boundaries are and addresses, so.
Actually, Steve, were there any annexations that would have changed our boundaries during 2020, or did those all happen in January?
They happened in January.
All right. Do I have a roll call? Can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous, does anybody have anything? Again, Restaurant Week started today. ABC News was live at 11:30, I believe they zoomed in from here. So please, visit our restaurants. Does it go through the 5th, or?
You know, Director Forsberg is online if you'd like. I'm stumping him, I don't know if he's available, but I see him connected.
He is. Larry Fors-
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Villasburg. Yes, today was the kickoff day for Westmont Restaurant Week, a very exciting time, and it will run through Sunday, March 7th. So encourage everyone to step out and visit our local restaurants.
And great discounts on their carryout or eat-in. So any other miscellaneous? I don't, there's no executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
And I thank everyone for attending, and this meeting is adjourned.